Okay, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Audit and Standards Committee. Thank you for attending on this rather inclement evening. Please, can I request that mobile telephones, no such equipment, to switch to silent modes so they don't disrupt the meeting? The meeting is a public meeting, it's been livestreamed for the public to view. Can I ask that when you wish to speak, that you raise your hand and only speak when I indicate you can, and please ensure that your microphone is switched on, and when you've finished, please switch your microphone off? There's no fire test planned today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff, and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. Now we'll just have a quick round of introductions for everyone in the room. I'm councillor Colin Ross and I'm chair of the meeting today, and if we go around in clockwise direction, so, Robert.
Thank you, Chair, I'm Robert Parkin, I'm the Deputy Monitoring Officer and advising the committee today, thank you.
Hi, I'm councillor Tomlin, I'm councillor for Walkley Wood.
Hi, everyone, I'm councillor Kevin Oxt from Mossborough Ward.
Hi, I'm councillor Simon Clement Jones from Beechford Green Ward.
Hi, I'm Linda Hunter, Senior Finance Manager, Interlord in Risk Management.
Hello, everyone, I'm Paul Taylor, I'm the council's head of customer services.
Good evening, everybody, I'm councillor Argent, I'm member for Broomhill and Chalwell.
Hi, I'm Alison Howard, I'm the independent co-opted member.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Ryan Keyworth, I'm the council's director of finance and commercial services.
Good evening, I'm Filippo Bedett from Democratic Services.
Thank you, everyone. Next item of agenda is apologies for absence. I think we've had one apology for absence from councillor Ben Curran. Do we know of any other apologies for absence? Okay, that's, that's... Item three on the agenda is exclusion of the press and public, and there are no items on this agenda to which we have to exclude the press and public. Item four is declarations of interest. Does any member have any declarations of interest they have to make in relation to items of business on tonight's agenda? I take silence as none. Therefore, we move on to item five on the agenda minutes of the previous meeting, which are pages nine to sixteen in your agenda pack. Can I take these as a true record? Or has anybody spotted any errors? I'll take again silence as acceptance as a true record. Are there any matters arising? And again, I'll take silence as there are no matters arising, it's going very well so far. Okay, that brings us to the substantive item on today's agenda, which is the annual corporate complaints report, an annual ombudsman's report, and the two items are linked. So Paul Taylor's going to go through a presentation, both items together, and then when he's finished the presentation, we'll open it up to questions and then move on to the recommendations after that. Okay, thank you, over to you, Paul.
Thanks, Chair. In the finest tradition of these things, can I start off with an apology? I was coming on to support this afternoon for a couple of my senior managers who were going to come along and do the presentation. Unfortunately, one's had a close family bereavement and the funeral is today, and the other one found out that she was moving house a few days ago, so she's currently in a removal van somewhere. So I've been sent with a few notes, hopefully I should be able to deal with most queries, but there may be the odd thing where I need to, with apologies, sort of go away and find out some information if necessary. So we're looking at the annual complaints and ombudsman reports for 2021/22. It's been a really, that year was a really interesting year for feedback and complaints because we've moved the system that complaints are recorded on, on to our customer relationship management system, which, long story short, means we can be, we can give a much better representation of complaints. And so the next report should be exponentially clearer than this one. And we also use the change, which happened in November 2021, to energise the whole way that the council deals with complaints, and to try to get everybody's services to take complaints more seriously. I think there is a danger, there has been a danger in the past, that complaints centres slip to the bottom of people's to-do list, and then before we know it, you know, we've got the ombudsman or whoever on our case saying, well, what's happening here? Because obviously, the feedback and complaints team don't investigate the complaints, but they marshal the process, they get the complaints out, they remind people when things are due back, et cetera. So there will be, there's quite a sort of cultural change, but in a way, it means this report's a tiny bit sort of schizophrenic because it's half, it's through to November with the old system, and then from November with the new system, and there are changes to that that we'll talk through as we go. So, I've already managed to break this one, so I shall try not to do it again. Hang on. There we go. Good. Didn't press it hard enough. So you can see, and you'll have seen because you've read through the report as well, that the council and, together with their partners, Amy and Viola, dealt with 2463 complaints in 21/22, which is a 22% increase on the previous year when there were 2014 complaints. Amy and Viola accounted for 57% of those complaints, so the rest of, obviously, the rest of council services are accountable for 43% of the complaints. So excluding our strategic partners, the largest number received were resources other, which we'll talk about, which is 8%, children's social care 6%, and council house repairs 5%. So it's two of the usual suspects and one unusual one. Forty-six percent of complaints were responded to within 28 calendar days, which is the target that services are supposed to work to. That excludes adult and children's social care, which have different, it's a statutory process that has different time scales within it. The average escalation rate, so that's where we've said to people, here's what we think about your complaint, and they go, I'm not happy with that, I want to take it up a stage. That is 27%. You can see that in 2021 it was 21%, 1920 it was 22%, so that is an increase in the escalation rate. And the most frequent reason for complaints, which again, may not be a surprise, was quality of service, which is 21%. And the top three remedies excluding apologies were taking action to enforce a decision, change the service provider, or change review or provider service. So important just to flag some improvements and ongoing developments. As I mentioned, we brought in a new feedback and complaint system, which went live at the start of November 2021. It captures all complaints, including those resolved at the problem solving stage. So one of the questions that I'm sure you all have is, why has the number of complaints gone up? From November, we started capturing problem solving, in the past we didn't. So if a service basically, within three days, could informally resolve a complaint, then that was that, that was done and dusted, but it wasn't recorded anywhere, and we didn't feel that was the right way. We do need to be able to capture that because we still need to have, be able to see what, you know, the numbers of complaints that have been made, even if we've been able to resolve them informally, which we can do with quite a lot. So from November, that's been captured, and that's not the only reason why the complaints have gone up by any means, but that's a factor in the fact that for five months, we were recording problem solving. There's been a massive emphasis on training the case coordinators and responding managers initially, about accurate recording, timely updates, responding within time scales, which is, you know, those of you who've listened to reports on the annual report before will know is a perennial issue. So a load of training's been done on that. There's now an effective complaints handling training course, which has been updated and relaunched, and gives guidance to people who are responding to complaints. There's now a new SharePoint site so that services can at any point go on and see what the situation to date is with their service. So it means that senior managers can see where there's slippage and whether there are problems with time scales, et cetera, et cetera. So as long as people make use of that site, that should make a difference. We've got much improved tracking and monitoring. As we know, responding within time scales is a problem, so the chasing mechanisms, if you like, have been refreshed to try and minimise the risk to the organisation. We're actively including senior accountable managers, including directors, in all chase and communication. So traditionally, what's happened is officers deal or don't deal with the complaints, and by the time it gets to a director, it's gone over time and there's already an issue with it. So now we try and make sure that directors, senior managers are copied in at an early stage so they know that there's a problem with a complaint and can hopefully move that along. So response time data and reasons for delay are provided quarterly now to performance leads. So for example, within customer services, we now, every quarter, have to go back to the performance leads and give some key indicators. And there's been a lot of learning, service improvements, remedies, improvements that are made to support services to ensure learnings, service improvements and remedies are consistently recorded, so that citizens can see what we're doing. And eventually, we need to get to a point of a sort of, you said we did, so people can see what we've done as a result of the complaints we've received. Equality data remains a real issue for us. Feedback and complaints is one of half a dozen services, it's actually my team again, who tried to bring in more equality monitoring, so that when people go online to fill a form in, at the end of it, it asks them to fill in equality data. But if I'm honest, we get 5% of those back, so that's not really giving us a picture of the sort of breakdown of people who are making complaints. So that's a big issue that we're working on how we can find a way to do that. We did talk about, can we put the equality data at the front so that people almost think, well, I need to fill that in before I fill the rest of the form in, but apparently that's not good practice and not desirable, so we're going to need to find a different way to do it. And we are reviewing the digital office, so hopefully we can pick that up as part of that. So I'll turn the question on its head, Chair, do people want to ask questions about that bit before we move on to the ombudsman stuff?
Thanks, Paul, for this, my favourite. It's really good to see things progressing. I just have a couple of questions for you. On the outcomes of complaints for the year that we're looking at, which is the past, the last financial year, there is 40% of the kind of outcomes that is categorized. Do we know why we don't have a category for that? Is it just because it's various different ones? It would be too long or...?
Yeah, I think it is, and I think it also comes back to that slackness in recording as well, and that people haven't been recording things properly, which now there are no excuses. As you'll see, because I think, actually, I've probably still got another slide on this, I've gone a bit early. One of the things that we're doing is making certain fields mandatory now, so that people have to, they can't complete a form unless they make that detail mandatory. So we should be able to pick that up.
Sorry, I had something else, which was about the training, which I know, when I remember the first year that I was on here, on this committee, we had a very, very low uptake of the training, and I wonder whether the data is better on that. And also, in terms of the staff that deal with the complaints, is there like a large turnover of staff, or is it quite a stable kind of staff cohort?
In terms of the training course, we've been seeking to make it mandatory, but there is, there's quite a healthy debate going on within the council at the moment because most services come up with training that they say, actually, we could do with this being mandatory, so what you end up with is an awful lot of mandatory training, and it's not getting done. So, I mean, certainly, the renewed emphasis on complaints is whether we've had quite good attendance at those training courses. There are perhaps a handful of services that haven't been as responsive as we'd like, and we're dealing with that at directorial level. So it's not mandatory, but it is, the attendance is good.
Just in terms of the complaints, I mean, it's really good that we're recording things better and that we have a new system, so hopefully, when we see this report this down next year, we can do like a comparison and have more of an idea of the impact. But in terms of, you know, it's great that we have resolutions of whatever the issues are, but is there a mechanism to record and implement lesson learned? So for example, is there like an automatic system where if there is something that goes wrong, we can rectify practice in how we deal with that particular issue so that it's not done, and is that recorded?
That's where we're trying to get to, and again, it's coming back to that point about the you said we did as well, but yes, so for every complaint, we should be able to capture what the lessons are and what's been done about that. It's not enough for services to just go, yeah, well, actually, we should be doing this, we need to see that actually being practically applied. So yes, again, that should look much better next year.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, then.
Actually, Angela, still, I thought that, I was going to ask that very same question in terms of within customer services, that element of getting it right first time, and so my question was around the learning from the complaints, and obviously, you can't learn from every single complaint, there's this volume there, but it's ensuring that our first, our first line staff that are dealing across the whole, across the whole of the council are learning from those complaints, and in particular, if there's common themes that are there.
Yeah, I think that's the point, that there are things, it's not just, some things aren't just peculiar to one service, there are sort of trends across the council, and we need to get sharper at picking those up and looking at more, you know, wide-ranging remedies. Also, just to come back to the point about staff turnover, because councillor Jenji, I know, I quite often come to meetings and grumble about staff turnover, but not this one, the feedback and complaints team is a very stable team. Certainly, our team is, the team within customer services, it's very busy, you know, we're forever looking at it and thinking, have we got enough resource here? Because as we've upped the ante in terms of how we deal with complaints, then the amount of work coming into that team has increased, but they're a very stable team. What I can't speak for are for sort of the accountable officers and the people sort of outing the services that we're dealing with, and whether they have turnover there, because the danger that we've done this, this big splurge of training, is that then people leave and nobody thinks, hang on, there's somebody else then that I need to get on this training, so we need to make sure we stay across that as well.
Okay, Tom, you want to come in then?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Thanks, Paul, for stepping in tonight. I don't have knowledge of the old system as a new member, so I'm looking at this sort of just as it comes, but I take your points entirely, and reassured by colleagues that, you know, this will lead to improvements. Having said that, I did read it and was quite troubled by some things in there, I'll be completely honest. And if we're going to make sure that everyone's treated fairly and every service is high quality, I think we need good data to inform our decisions, and there were three bits of data that really alarmed me, if I'm honest. First was 46% of complaints responded to in 28 days. Welcome your thoughts on how that is going to be improved in this year. The lack of equality data, and again, you've noted that that's going to be improved, but perhaps you could, and you may come to it in your presentation, perhaps you can just flesh out how that's going to be improved. And then the increase in year, in the escalation rate, it's, you know, just over a quarter, but quite a big step up from the previous year. I don't know to what extent, that might be down to the new system, but your thoughts on that and how that can be lowered in the next few years. So I think, yeah, comments on all that would be really helpful, thank you.
Just before you answer, Kevin, did you want to come back on something? I don't know whether, Tommy, you've been reading my script, but I was going to make exactly the same points, and perhaps when we come to the recommendations, depending on the responses, you may want to say something about the fact that we've, you know, had less than 50% on time, the escalation rate went up, and the quality is only around about 5%, and just the other thing, I'll make it easier and throw into the mix at the same time, that one of the dissatisfactions was attitudes of staff that came up, not your staff, as they say, but, you know, the council staff, and what we can do about training, training them in customer relations, I suppose.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I might just need to ask for Claire's help again, because I was checking whether I'd still got another slide before I got to the ombudsman, but now can't find a way to get it to go up. Oh, there we are, good. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, so the 46% response rate, I think, is a microcosm of the whole thing that's been wrong with complaints, because people haven't been taking it seriously. I would say this, wouldn't I? My team have, they spend a lot of time chasing people to get those responses speeding up, but I think it's almost like a cultural thing that people haven't been, don't deal with complaints seriously enough, or they, probably more that they deprioritise them. You know, there's loads of other things to do. I think there's also an element about, oh, it's somebody's job, but nobody ends up picking the job up, so we've now got this system, a very clear system of accountable and responsible officers, so it's clear within services who's the person who should be dealing with complaints, and that's where we can put the pressure on. It's also that thing about making more noise with directors, so that there's pressure coming on to people to treat complaints seriously. And probably, if I'm being honest, one of the things that I'd like to come away from this meeting with is a momentum from members, that it's really not good enough that people aren't taking complaints as seriously as they should. You know, we talk a lot about customer standards, and I go to various committees talking about customer experience, one of the key ways of measuring customer experience is what comes in through complaints and how we deal with those, and I think, so I think as an authority, we miss a trick. So I think it's about us creating that noise and momentum, which has started with the training from November, but I think it would also be really helpful, you know, the disapproval, if you like, from the Audit and Standards Committee about that being an unacceptable figure. You know, and there's a limit to how much pressure we can put on people, we know people are busy, especially when you're talking areas like adult social care, where they've got pressures raining on them from all sorts of directions, but at the end of the day, you're right, that's no, an unacceptable response rate. The lack of equalities data, I think there are a number of ways of coming at it. A key one is we're hoping to get to a point where we're getting customer accounts in place for people. Now, when people set up a customer account, if we can capture equalities datas there, then if that customer makes a complaint, we've already got that data, and then it's easier for us to go back and track that. Because in terms of, I mean, the other way, I think, is to try and build equality questions in a more subtle way into the way that the form is recorded, to try and get information from people, because clearly, having something, you know, we do say it's really, really helpful for us to know the makeup of people who are filling this form in, it'd be really helpful if you can give us this information, but only 5% of people do, so that's not going to be the way. And we need to work with our equalities team and equalities specialists, and we do, about, I mean, it's not just about complaints, it's about across the board, how can we more effectively work, you know, see the makeup of our customers, and especially in complaints, because if certain groups are saying, you know, if there's more people from certain groups complaining about things, and especially when you're getting into complex stuff like, you know, special needs, like SENS stuff, we'd really need to know that. And I think, again, we need to work with services on that as well, it's not necessarily something that can just come from the complaints team, I think it needs to come from services.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Paul, the data that you're about to present is based on our 43% that have come direct, have complaints directed to council services, but obviously, 57% was down to our key partners, Amy and Viola, and we've got no breakdown of, no real breakdown of what those complaints are, and obviously, it's not our job necessarily to go out and audit them, but what are we doing about managing, if you like, that 57% of complaints that account for a massive volume of those total complaints coming in, to make sure that both Viola and Amy are dealing with those complaints seriously, and we're satisfied that they are rectifying those complaints?
Yeah. We need to get reports from them, really, I mean, I get it, a lot of the complaints are, why hasn't my bin been emptied? You know, I think that's a big chunk of stuff, lots of things about, you know, repairs going on to roads, all that sort of stuff, but we don't have that breakdown, so we do need to get more, I think, people, and I've just done it myself, I think people fall into traffic, and yeah, it's just people complaining, they're leaving and stuff, but actually, we do need more visibility. And if I'm honest, we also need to make sure we've got that equality data across those areas as well. So that's my first one to take away and come back to you, something else. I missed your last couple of points off. The escalation rates, I think some of it is to do with the pandemic, and we're eventually going to move to a point where we don't blame the pandemic for stuff, but there clearly was, there was a lot of pressure coming on as we came out of the pandemic. So again, customer services, you know, my home team had a lot more complaints, and most of those are about delays. And, you know, some members in this room, you know, we've talked at length about the queues for the contact centre, but that's the sort of thing that generates complaints. The repairs thing where people will probably remember, people could only order emergency repairs until March last year, when suddenly the flag went down and everybody could order everything, but what that meant was a massive backlog in repairs, so that consequently then leads to a greater escalation rate. So I think that's a chunk of it. I don't think it reflects people doing a less good job, I think it was really about the pressure that was created from the pandemic, as we came out of the pandemic, that's sort of been caught up there. And I think you had one more question as well, didn't you? Exactly, thank you, sir.
I think it might be mine, but it's a general point about staff training, customer relationship dissatisfaction. I think actually, probably better if you press on and give the rest of the presentation, and then we can... Right, and then, after your question briefly, then we'll complete the presentation, and then we'll get cross references of things that are covered later on.
Yeah, of course.
It's more of a comment, and you already know my opinion about this, it's like, complaining is the front door, isn't it? And we need to make it as easy as possible for people to be able to complain, and there was actually someone in a meeting on Tuesday, one of the officers says, I really like when people complain, because we can then work things out and sort things out, things out and make sure that it doesn't happen again. So we need to make it as easy as possible, and it's good that people can complain in different ways, but ultimately, the reason why people complain is not because of the customer service necessarily, it's because some of our services have got this backlog or are not working properly. So at the end of the day, until we sort those departments that for whatever reason are not performing well or not as well as they could, we're going to get lots of complaints, and therefore, you know, the customer service lines are blocked and there's lots of people. So it's not, you know, it's good that people are complaining, but it means the system is working in a way, so, thank you.
Yeah, no, I think you're absolutely right, and some of it is indicative of all the structural things that need to change. I mean, certainly, some of the pandemic stuff has calmed down now, and the contact centre is performing much better, but yes, there are, it is indications of some structural problems within some of the services, I think that has to be acknowledged. So I'll crack on then, and we'll start working through the ombudsman stuff. So there were 114 complaints referred to the council from the ombudsman, the various sort of ombudsmen, which is a 20% increase on the previous year. And the largest numbers received were housing, adult social care, and children, and education and children's. Again, those of you who've gone through this before, that's fairly consistent. The housing ombudsman reported 19 complaints inquiries received about the council, which is a 46% increase on the previous year, so obviously, that's not big numbers, but the percentages are quite high. The local government's social care ombudsman upheld 15 complaints, and the housing ombudsman upheld two. And of the 170 inquiries recorded by the council, the council's team, our team, my team, 76% or 89% were concluded without a formal investigation. Of the 28 that were formally investigated, which was 24%, highest numbers were housing in neighbourhoods, adult social care, and repairs and maintenance. The ombudsman weren't happy about response times, so it's the same point, but written larger really. The average response... Um, the average response time to twenty-six formal inquiries was thirty-four calendar days. The the target is is twenty-eight calendar days, which is twenty working days. Um, so it was thirty-four calendar days, twenty-four working days. Um, it's an improvement. That that one is an improvement on the previous year, so there are some improvements. But we only met the original response deadline in thirty-one percent of cases. And in the in the annual letter that we get from the from the Ombudsman, um, they raise concerns about the number of late responses being received. Um, the reasons for that are mainly due to late or incomplete service comments and information. And and I, you know, I don't want it to feel like I'm gonna sit here and go, oh, my team are trying their best, but services aren't responding. Again, services have got lots of pressures, lots of things going on. Um, and there was one case, as as we highlighted, where actually extending the deadline meant that we were able to resolve the issue. So we always need to be aware that that in some cases, that's that's the situation. Um, the twelve responses that exceeded the original deadline by more than seven days um were adult social care, children's social care, housing neighbourhoods, repairs and maintenance, customer services, that's one of ours. Um, Send ours, obviously, which is the the special educational needs and environmental protection streets ahead. Um, again, there was a slight thing as as we came out of the pandemic where the Ombudsman extended their own timescales and said, oh, it's gonna take us a bit longer because we're coming out of the pandemic. And they sort of gave us a bit of leeway in that as well. But if I'm being absolutely honest, they stopped giving us the leeway before they started giving it to themselves. So there's there's an element of that within the response times. But again, the response times aren't acceptable and a chunk of that is about services. Even even Ombudsman Inquiry Services not not giving that an appropriate degree of priority, which we'll we'll carry on discussing. So in terms of the outcomes, seventeen complaints are upheld and they're they're obviously within within the report. Uh, we didn't get any public reports during twenty-one, twenty-two, which is good because we had two the previous year. Uh, and you'll see that we paid eight hundred and, sorry, eight thousand four hundred and forty-five pounds out in terms of compensation, which again is a considerable improvement on the previous year where we paid out the best part of twenty-seven grand. So so that's that's a bit of a good news story. That that's certainly looking better. And the fact we didn't get any public reports is is always a good thing. So some examples of the sort of learning that we've been able to work through during twenty-one, twenty-two. So so these, if you like, are some of the the sort of outcomes that came from the discussions with the Ombudsman. So, um, regular joint meetings, oh, thank you, I have got one, never thought of. Um, so regular joint meetings between repairs and maintenance and leasehold service to to review current leak cases. Um, so I don't try and service improvements and procedures. So actually, what we ended up there is with services talking to each other better, which is which is always a good thing. Um, review of system around the E H C P annual reviews. Um, so again, there's that's there's a couple of cases there which are all to do with with Send. Um, a tracking system, for example, to to track children or people who might be struggling in placements, which are the point of breakdown or broken down. So so in effect, what's come out of working with the Ombudsman investigation is services thinking, actually, we need to be more proactive about the way we we're dealing with this. So so that is that is a real outcome. Um, the policy on abandoned vehicles has been updated. Um, so, you know, there's now the provision of a fifteen day advance notice prior to removal of abandoned vehicles. And interim training delivered around the Care Act, around the assessment of need. I mean, after you look at them and think, well, some of these are fairly obvious, really, but but at least the Ombudsman, the Ombudsman intervention is driving those. Okay, let me throw some benchmarking. Um, so seventy-five percent of the complaints by the local government social care ombudsman uh were upheld, um, which is higher than sixty-eight percent average for similar authorities. Course city upheld rates range from fifty percent to seventy-eight percent. Um, in twenty percent of upheld cases, the L G S C O found that the authority provided a satisfactory remedy. That's good. That's that's before the complaint reached the Ombudsman. So that that's above the average of eleven percent in similar authorities, course city rates six percent to twenty-five percent. And um we had a hundred percent compliance rate with recommendations. Um, however, we were late in in completing the agreed actions in two complaints. So again, you know, that's a really good benchmark, can't can't get better than 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 that hundred percent compliance rate. Um, so really, that's that's a very quick tour of the report, um, delivered by a substitute. Um, but really, you know, as I say, it would be good to 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 hear your views on on that performance. And and again, if I'm being blunt, it would be useful to have um some momentum towards, you know. I mean, I think I think across across the council, complaints are being treated more seriously. I think there has been a a good degree of success coming from that change of system. And and my team, if I'm honest, have worked really hard, getting the training in place, organising the 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 people who are dealing with complaints, getting directors involved. There has been that momentum, but we we need to keep that going, really. Um, so so if if it would be really good to get the the thoughts of of this committee so we can lob that into the pot to 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 get a much better set of performance figures out next year.
Thank you, yeah, I'll throw it open. I mean, one of the things that that shouted out to me and it it was in the thrust of your presentation was actually the letter to the Chief Executive from the Ombudsman, uh, which is page sixty-three in in the pack. It was pretty damning and forthright, yeah, and clearly they were not happy about our response rate. And I think that would be reflected in our recommendations, I suggest. Right, okay, I've got Simon first on this section.
Um, thank you. Um, I don't think I've particularly got any any questions as such, um, so you probably relax. Um, but um in terms of uh of the report, um, I mean, over the years, I've seen quite a few of these. And I think um what we're getting there in terms of the presentation and and how that comes across, so that's a tick. Um, the one thing is, I would say, is is you've got set pages that are A three, spreadsheets, it's really unfriendly. Um, and I say that is one of the most important bits of the of the report. Obviously, it is a cut and paste, but if we can format that a bit more friendly, it does make it a bit more accessible. Um, I think really for me, um, this often is a is a point at which the Audit Committee kind of looks at at the complaints that are made and at the 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 Ombudsman's report and thinks, you know, how have we got here? What can we do better? What areas can can we as an Audit Committee look at and perhaps commission some reports? So I've really got a bit of a, perhaps a recommendation. And I know from from my experience as a councillor and I know talking to to other councillors, um, that the housing repairs has been, um, it's been the area that has caused us, I think, I think the most most problems. Um, and similar to the way, um, in the past, we've looked at children's services, um, I think we've looked at the contact centre um and done a bit of specific work. Um, obviously, we're always kind of shutting the the door after the stove is bolted um in in a lot of these situations. But, um, you know, what you know, what what we hope to do is, and and what has happened in the past, is we've got people in. Um, they've given us an honest assessment of where we are, um, and a bit of background on on kind of how we got here. Um, and, um, you know, hopefully given us, um, you know, what we're gonna be doing um in the future to 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 correct things. And as I say, I think from from my perspective, um, housing repairs has been the thing that's caused me the most kind of problems. Um, obviously, we've got a bit of an increase in terms of housing complaints from the Ombudsman here. I think the evidence is out there, there's been an issue and I've been through the through the budget, um, through the budget process, um, I've been hearing about the legal costs that that would be having. So, you know, it may be that we've we've paid out eight thousand in um in in compensation through the through this process. Um, but through the legal process, we tend to be spending a great deal of money of people on compensation. So, you know, there there seems to be a job for the Audit Committee to to do, um, to look into this. Um, so as I'm really asking for us to perhaps make that a focus, we can look into um in um on the on the on the work programme to to see, really, kind of say what what's going on. I think that's about it. Thank you.
I think that was more of a comment and things here. And and so and when we come to the work programme, perhaps a suggestion about what we want to put into the work programme then, which is the next item on the agenda. Okay, Kevin then, Angela.
I think just building what you said, Chair, and and what you said, Paul, as well, in terms of certainly, you were asking for a recommendation from this committee to go back to Directors of Services to treat complaints seriously. I mean, just to re-emphasise that, there is a question which, in terms of, I'll ask you about. But but clearly, we should be asking Directors of Services to build in, if you like, that complaints, the complaints that they're receiving about their service, that about their service, into their change management plans, into their service development and delivery. Because without that, we're not gonna get better, we're not gonna improve and we're not gonna deliver. Because what we should be aiming for is is a reduction in complaints and not in the increase that we've seen. And I get it, this this pandemic, but I just wanted to, the question then is about the dashboard that those Directors are able to see. How accessible is it and what type of information can they see that they could then directly use to impact on on their teams that are delivering their service?
Yeah, essentially what they can see is the level of detail that that we have within this report on a quarterly basis. So it's not gonna be the case that services just wait and they see the annual report and go, okay, is that it? You know, the the expectation is that they they can see quarterly updates. So at the moment, they can go through quarter two um and see what performance is looking like. And they can see it quarter on quarter, they can they can see how it's how it's developing. Um, the art, I think, is to make sure that Directors are doing that. You know, that the people, again, are taking taking complaints as a serious thing. Absolutely take your point about building it into the way services are structured and being clear within services, who actually are the people who are responsible for this and what are the the escalations within services. So it's like, well, if they're not responsible, can we go in somewhere and and somebody will get something done? But yeah, people have got no excuses now. It used to be something, you know, um, under the old system, I think, complaints were pretty much in a dark cupboard and we pulled out a few stats and we submitted for each quarter. And then it was the annual report that gave the light of what was going on. People have got no reason now to say, oh, I couldn't see what was happening across the quarters with our service. And and, you know, if there's particular services where those response times are really poor or where there's a lot more escalation going on, then then really Directors have have no reason now to to not be able to to see what's happening and do something to answer.
Got Angela first and then Tom.
Thanks, Paul, for that. Um, it's taken a quite long time to get to the point where it's getting better. Because, as you know, I've been on this committee for three and a half years. And um we've, you know, in the in this particular committee, we've been pushing for things to improve. And then we got the pandemic and obviously there's been pushback on that. Um, but I think our aim should be not to have many complaints, but if we do get complaints, not to get to the point where they don't get resolved and they go to the Ombudsman.
Yeah.
Because that is about, it's also about our reputation, isn't it? Because there are certain cases, and obviously last year we had two published reports. Um, and that's not good for us as a as an organisation to, you know, to not have a good reputation. I mean, it would be good to have as few complaints as possible, to make it very easy to complain. But to to resolve things before they happen, basically. And going back to the question from Kevin about um um Viola and Amy, I think it's really important that we have some kind of, not control, but some kind of handle of how they resolve complaints themselves. Because again, people assume that's the council. So it's about the council's reputation. Although they are partners, it's not us. It's really important from our kind of reputational point of view that we have kind of a maybe an approach that is a bit stricter with them. I don't know what the proceed, what what information we get from them. But it would be good to to just put that kind of pressure as a partner to say, you need to get your act together because you are impacting on the reputation of Sheffield City Council, let alone their own reputation.
No, no, I'd agree. I I think, yes, it's interesting that the thing about, um, if we have fewer complaints, it's not necessarily a good thing because it could be that our systems are really obfuscatory. It's really difficult to actually make a complaint or people have complained in the past and thought, well, it was a complete waste of time, I'm not even gonna bother. Um, so so I don't think fewer, you know, having fewer complaints is necessarily desirable. Especially now we're moving into this world of capturing the problem solving ones as well. So we 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 will need to very clearly delineate those problem solving ones. So it'll be clear to you as a committee that actually the overall complaints may be going down, but the the numbers will be going up because we're capturing that front end stuff. Um, so so yes, it's, we we do want to reduce the numbers of complaints, but we also want to make sure that people feel there's a point to them complaining and something's gonna get done and some action is gonna be taken.
Thank you. Um, I am capturing sort of comments here to to formulate into some suggested recommendations at the end, including liaison with Amy and Viola and things like that. So, uh, who was it? Tom, Tom, then Kevin.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Paul, for the rest of the presentation. Um, I'll make a number of questions, ask a number of questions and a few comments, that's all right. Um, but I'll move through them quick. On um financial remedies, there's a figure in the presentation about the amount of compensation that was paid out as a result of Ombudsman cases. But there were nineteen cases where financial remedy was the outcome for council complaints. Do you know how much compensation was paid out for in total for those nineteen?
I I think they're within the financial remedies. I can double check it. What tends to happen is that there's a lot of cases where the Ombudsman says, um, you've resolved it, but you should pay this person uniquely two hundred and fifty pounds for their trouble. So I think that that that's sort of what's making up that that figure are small amounts where, because people have had to go to a load of trouble to get something resolved, it gets resolved. But it's like you you need to make a small financial compensation.
Right, okay.
Whereas some of the some of the big ones from last year, from memory, one of them was a Send case where it was basically this 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 child has missed out on this many years. And actually, you need to compensate the parent for that. So that was that was a massive amount with a lot of the financial remedies are are just paying paying an amount in addition to sorting the case out.
Okay, thank you. Um, there were two thousand four hundred and sixty-three complaints. Do you know how many people that comes from? Do we have data to record that? Now, I'm not for the minute suggesting that there's a problem with serial complainers. If people are making multiple, have the need to make multiple complaints, then that's, we should know about that. And that often suggests that there's some serious issues that need looking at. But I just wondered if we're capturing um the number of unique complainers to the council in our data.
The answer is, I don't know. I think I think we possibly do. I I will go away and find out. Um, I don't have a sense that that would be set with serial complainers. Um, but but yeah, there there are some elements, you know, there may be some elements of that, so I'll I'll certainly check that.
Thank you. Um, the third question was, we're now seven months into the next year. Is there a way in which the new system would allow this report to this to come to this committee quicker next year? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's one of the things and it should now be a case of, I mean, we're 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 working with sort of I T colleagues to just, you know, iron out any glitches in terms of the way you report. The the vision and the way that, if you like, it was sold to us when we set it up was, it should just be okay. Somebody presses a button and all this stuff comes comes spewing out. Certainly this this report, because I mean, you know, some years it's been like, it's been like January, February before a report's come, when the next year's nearly finished. This should be much quicker.
Okay.
So, yes, you know, he said, see if that get recorded somewhere.
Thank you. We'll book it in for the work programme earlier in the year next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, then the last comments were, just in terms of recommendation, I think it's pretty clear that the data needs improving. And for me, the big um thing that would really need a lot of focus on is improving those response times. Um, under half within twenty-eight days is is not good enough. And I think if you want a strong steer, then then that's certainly one from me and I'm sure colleagues as well. Um, and I think it leads on to my last point, which is that if we're not getting back to people in good amount of time, they're not gonna bother. And, you know, I asked a question about the escalation rate earlier on. The real escalation rate, the most serious escalation will come if people are not reporting, not complaining. That's when problems we won't find out about will get significantly worse. And then we'll find out about them when there's some worst case scenarios that I'm sure we can all imagine. So that response rate, for me, really does matter greatly. Um, as as the equality data really matters as well, so that we know are there marginalised groups who are particularly suffering, uh, poor treatment or experiencing poor treatment in a different way? So I think, you know, this, on the face of it, looks like a a fairly dry matter. But, you know, this is front page stuff, um, if it doesn't get sorted out.
It's interesting in terms of the marginalised groups, we need to make sure that we're making the process clear to everybody in the communities. And I'm not sure hand on heart that we do, you know, in terms of 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 sort of the the very minority communities, whether whether people You know, in terms of, of sort of the very minority communities, whether, whether people feel clear about what they can do and how the complaint system works. And I think we need to, we need to work with communities and community groups to just satisfy ourselves that everybody knows how to access that system.
Thank you. Good points and certainly in my notes, the proposed recommendations, I've captured those. And your last point there about equality goes back to the 15% or whatever on the equality data. Okay, Kevin then. Commenting a question, following on from what Tom says. What breakdown have we got of those complaints in terms of whereabouts in the city? And which wards those complaints could be from? Because that would be also an interesting picture. If there is certain parts of the city, certain wards where we're getting a lot more complaints. Because that will help to some extent, we saw that equality information that we're not getting. But also it would help identify key areas of the city where that we, it would appear that we're failing.
Yeah.
So that would be interesting. And just perhaps a task for legal and governments, if it's their area, just building on the Viola and Amy issue on their complaints. I'd be interested, given the amount of money that the council is paying them to deliver those services, if it's written into their contract in terms of how they deal with those complaints and resolve those complaints? And if they have the same set of timelines of resolution that we're aiming for within our own council services?
Yeah, in terms of where people are from in the city, I don't think the old system did, but I think the new system should be able to. And again, I'll go out and check that. Because obviously we also then need to subdivide it in a way as well. Because if there are complaints about a particular service from a particular bit of the city, then there are issues there as well. So yeah, I think that's a really good point and certainly I'll check that out.
My list of recommendations is getting longer with each bit that comes in. Okay, I think I'll try and capture what we want. And I'm very conscious, because I had conversations before the meeting as well, that actually you and your team would like a strong steer from this committee to help resolve this. And I am suggesting we make a very strong steer from this. That in the recommendations say that the Audit and Standards Committee is asked to consider the annual corporate complaints report, the annual ombuds report in order to provide its view on the performance of the complaints handling and management within the city council. I suggest that we say that we are dissatisfied with the complaints handling and performance as presented in these reports. In particular, the response, well, no, I'll change that. Directors must ensure that response times are met in a timely manner. Philip, you can tidy up my syntax here a little bit as we go along. We need to explore ways to capture more equalities data and the geographical data, which is your last point about the ward. Because that might expose whether people are complaining more in one part of the city or whether there are issues about services in one part of the city. Next point is, we need to receive a breakdown of the complaints from Amy and Viola and information on how those complaints have been dealt with. And underlying this, that as an organisation, any organisation, actually its reputation is not just on the complaints, but how it handles complaints. Good organisations respond well to complaints and actually get bonus points from responding well to complaints and satisfaction therefore increases. And so my final point would be that we want Sheffield City Council to respond in a, in a way, in a way that enhances its reputation as a caring council that listens to its population. Does that sort of capture the essence of what we're saying? Or would anybody else like to throw in anything else? And do you think that's strong enough to be able to take back to, and we've got Ryan here and Robert, to take back to senior management level meetings and ensure that that is on the, actually, no, I'll add something else to ensure this. And that this recommendation is sent to the chief executive. There was something else, Chair, as well about the recommendation to directors of services to build in the complaints that they're received into their, into their service delivery and change management plans. Okay, can we add that to the first recommendation? That when we said must, must respond in timely manner, that, repeat what you said, Kevin, for Philip's benefit. Have you got that? Yeah. Tom.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I think they're, they're good set of recommendations that you've. Hello. The question I had, if we want to give a really strong steer, do we want to put in a recommendation that this comes back to us with an action plan that sets out how our concerns are being remedied in a fairly timely fashion? And I'd suggest within this financial year.
Okay, and I think that builds on what Simon's suggestion was, that we add something into the work programme, which is the next item on the agenda, that we get a report back and we'll look at what date would be appropriate. Yeah. But, and actually, yeah, we probably want a response back from the chief executive to our recommendations as well. Kevin then. Sorry Chair, final question. In terms of that compensation, whose budget does that come out of? Does it come out of a central budget or does it come out of each service's budget?
I'm not sure.
That's a question for Ryan, I think. You've been silent all night, this is where it comes to you, Ryan.
Sorry Chair, off the top of my head, I don't know.
I suspect it might be out of individual departments where there have been the complaint made against.
I think it is, but I don't quite know what the mechanism is where that happens. It's a good question.
Okay, I, that will come out in an eloquent form in the minutes of the meeting and be sent on. And if you want to run it by me sort of before it goes out and we'll make sure that it satisfies the meeting. And I think, well, thank you for coming and taking that. And I realise that your team in customer services are working hard. And I hope, you know, you appreciate the fact that we're trying to give you some oomph to be able to, to improve the situation.
Absolutely, thank you, that's very much appreciated. And apologies for the slightly abusive nature of the presentation, that's what happens when you get the silver. So thank you, that's really helpful.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the work programme and be conscious of the fact that we want to add something in coming out of tonight's meeting. So this is in the page 73 in the pack. And well, actually in the pack, we really ought to be on page 78 really, because we've done 17th of November, in December, we've got.
You mentioned that the system, you know, at the press of a button, he says, would give us this. So, I mean, obviously what we don't want to do is give out too much work to officers unnecessarily. But if it is just a case of that, would it be possible to get, you know, when would we be able to get perhaps that interim report without, say, causing too much disruption in terms of just information rather than asking officers to come along? I don't know.
Yeah, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I'm going to say it anyway. I suppose, yeah, we could, we could come back with, say, the first two quarters. We could, you know, or maybe even possibly the third quarter if we're coming back around every time. Just so you get an idea of the direction of travel.
And then obviously, it might be that, you know, we look at this monthly, you know. But yeah, as I say, if that's possible, I don't know what that timing would be for us to collate it and then get it to us. But obviously, that's, that's our data, not our partners' data. We wouldn't, we don't have that real time, do we?
Yeah, it'd be sort of quarter by quarter, I think, would be the way to do it.
The Sheffield data or our partners as well?
The partners' data is, I don't know, I'd need to go and ask a few questions.
I think that's, yes, I think that's all we can really ask is a report on the Sheffield data, council data perhaps, rather than all of the data.
Yeah, Ryan wants to come in on this.
Thanks Chair. I suppose my observation is that the role of the audit committee here is about making sure that the council is running these processes correctly and to the right standard. That the role to be with respect is not to scrutinise the performance data. What you've commented rightly on today is that you're not happy with the way that officers and to a certain extent other members with more direct responsibility for oversight are overseeing and running this process. So I think I just urge a little bit of caution, if we're asking for quarterly complaints data, that feels more like management than governance with respect.
Yeah, not a sermon, I think really all I'm looking for, I think what we're really looking for is that is a point at which this comes up on the agenda, so we can then go, all right, I remember this. Where are we now? Because as I say, you know, it is, it is an issue for us and that we want to, want to keep up there, you know, until it's sorted.
I just want to be clear what we're asking for here. Because we want a report back on how things are likely to be responded to in our recommendations that we've just made. But I don't want to overload agendas with, and I'm not sure this is what you're asking for, reports, you know, every, every quarter.
Yeah, sorry, I mean, I think it's possibly just as Ryan's perhaps, is to satisfy accuracy to some degree in terms of what's going on. And but as I say, for me, you know, it would be just another opportunity to get into this without having to wait another year, you know, if it is, is that much, you know, to focus people's minds.
I think that part of the problem is that we're in November now, first looking back on March and before that last year. In Paul's presentation, he was saying, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, that it will be much earlier in the year, in the next financial year because of the reporting system, which might solve some of the problems. I've got Tom indicating, then we'll come to a decision on what we want and when. And then there's Angela.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, just to be clear, what I was suggesting earlier on, it's as you said, that within this financial year, I suggest that we ask for a report back on how progress towards meeting our recommendations is made. And then to pick up on what Paul said about the quicker ability in the next year to produce this report, I suggest we just pull that forward in the work programme to summer, if possible, next year, after the, in the next municipal year. So that was the distinction I made. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we get into looking at interim data within the financial year.
Okay, that's helpful. Angela.
Yeah, can I agree with Tom on this? And I think we did it last year where in November we had this report. And then in January, we went a bit deeper because of questions that were asked in this. I'll be the historical kind of memory of the committee, if you want. So we have had an instance before where we've had the report in November, just this last year. And then in January, we had the services back, just to give an update on progress. But I think it is important to remember that the committee remit is about the how things are done rather than scrutinising, because we're not a scrutiny committee. And I think if we want that kind of in depth, you know, how things are progressing by quarter, there is the policy committee that can look at that, the relevant, here on the relevant policy committee.
Can I make a suggestion then to see if we can resolve this? That, as Tom suggested, we want to report back on how, you know, what's happened to our recommendations. Looking at the work programme, February, 16th of February, it seems, gives a couple of months and it seems a fairly light agenda for that one. So a report back there. And then in the light of what it said in that report, we can consider whether we want more updates on data as a consequence of that. Yeah? I'm trying to, I'm trying to ride two horses there at once here.
From my perspective, I say it was really, you know, something to hang it on, to go back to see what's happening. So I'm more than happy with that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you very much. So that's the plan then, folks. Yeah. Is there anything else anybody wants to look at in the work programme for December? We've got, which was our next meeting, whistleblowing, information management and progress in high opinion reports. January strategic risk reporting, annual standards report and code of conduct. Community schools update, which is something I think we asked for. And statements of accounts, which should be coming out, that could be the big one. And we'll just talk about February and March is again light. And this is taking us to the, towards the end of the municipal year. I'd say people are happy with that, but the addition, Simon, you want to add something?
I was curious about the assertion that we're not here to scrutinise. Because now that we don't have a scrutiny council, then actually I think it is a bit more beholden on us to do that scrutiny. Because certainly in a council where we're in no overall control, to some degree, you know, it's, it's, everyone's responsibility in that, in that sense. And so, you know, there needs to be somebody else that is doing that scrutiny and has the power to say, I think there's something going wrong, I want to look at it. And so that was the point I was making about repairs. You know, I can see something's going wrong through what I've seen, what we see from the complaints, what I'm hearing from the budget process, what I'm hearing from my constituents, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, what I'm reading in the papers. And as I say, I think, you know, where, where can we find out what's happening? How we got to where we are? An honest assessment of what we can do to sort this out, what we're doing about it. And, and, you know, do that, do that, do that scrutiny work that we've done before. As I say, we've done it with Charles, we've done it with, you know, and it's related certainly to this. With the, with the contact centre, we've looked at that. And so to say, all I'm going to say is, I think, you know, we need to look at this, you know, as a, as a committee rather than looking at, rather than the policy committees, than look at this through the policy telescope of, you know, what can we do, you know, where are we now? What do we need to do? As I say, I think, you know, it seems to be gone, something's gone wrong there. And that's what audit committees are for.
I think that's exactly what we've done tonight, we've scrutinised the report. We weren't satisfied with what's happened and we put some forward some recommendations and asked for a report back in February.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not talking about the complaint service now, I'm talking about the repair service of the council and what's happened in that. Saying that's, that's really to say what I'm, what I'm asking this council, sorry, this committee to have a look at, because it's something that, you know, as I say, I'll be concerned about. I think, you know, we need to get to the bottom of some of this.
Don't want to prolong this discussion too much, but I mean, the specific example of housing repair service and performance of that, would that not be the housing committee that would be doing that? And if they're not doing that, then perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, probably should have talked about this before the meeting a bit. But as I say, for me, it's, you know, I'm not sure whether, whether that work is being done. As I say, it seems to have been done, you know, a bit piecemeal, as I say, in terms of looking at it from the policy. As I say, for us, it needs to be about, you know, what's gone wrong, lessons learned, you know, are we, are we doing this? We're scrutinising effectively our colleagues in terms of, in terms of, you know, their performance and where, you know, I've seen my constituents let down, the city let down. I mean, you know, I mean, I, you know, I can probably, probably outside this meeting come up with a, with a more coherent ask. And it's, it's a bit, as I say, having had some of the budget discussions we've had, it's a bit difficult to talk about some of that in this, in this, in public. So yeah, you know, as I say, I think I may well return to this subject at some point in the future. But, you know, obviously I'll put a marker down that that's, as I say, I think something that this committee ought to have a look at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Point, point well received. Tom, you indicated.
I did, thank you. In terms of future business, I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to have another look at the new housing system? We had an update on this and I know the audit committee in previous years has had a strong interest in the procurement and now implementation of the new housing system. That's not scheduled to be implemented until beginning September 23 through to the spring of 24. That's not scheduled to be implemented until beginning September twenty-three through to the spring of twenty-four. Would it be appropriate for this committee to check back in on the progress of that procurement and implementation, given the sort of significance of that piece of work for a number of things that we've already talked about tonight and have at previous meetings? It may be that that's the Housing Policy Committee, but I'd welcome an assessment from colleagues on that, given that I know this committee has had quite a heavy and right focus on that in the past.
Seems the last two comments have actually highlighted something that we're learning with the new governance system of where things should lie and whether, who has responsibility for these things. Can I rely on people who, legacy members of the committee, who, you know, had previous sites on this about what the best way forward would be? Angela and Simon?
I cannot recall us having kind of that kind of reports here. We've had reports when we've asked for them, like, for example, we've asked for the housing. And I think it's not inappropriate to ask, to ask any kind of department to bring like a report here. So for example, if we decide that we do want to see something from the housing repair, however, I know that that has already been looked into the relevant committees. And in fact, it might be coming to S and R at some point, the repairs. So for example, the repairs bit last year came to overview scrutiny. And I think we do need to maybe refresh our memory what the term of references of this committee are, because we're not a scrutiny committee, and that is very clear in our governance. So I think it's okay for us to ask for a report, but we need to keep in mind that we are not a scrutiny committee, because we are not a scrutiny committee. We are just a committee. And so we've got to be careful not to thread on other people's toes. And so it might be good to ask for some legal advice, how best to look at it. But I would be interested in having something about the housing as it's something new. So for example, when customer service came here for the first time, January twenty-twenty, I remember it really well, because it was just before the pandemic, it was because the new system was supposed to come in. We'd taken the services out of capital, so they came here to tell us what was going to happen in terms of change in how the calls were going to be handled, that the website was going to be changed. So they came to present all of that, because it was a big change for the council. But we weren't scrutinising, we were just looking at the development of it. So I think it's just how we ask reports to be done. And reports are different for this committee compared to what they are for other committees. And we used to have wording that was used and that was very specific and said, this is what our committee needs. So you can't just regurgitate a report that's been written for another committee, because we are different and we are interested in the mechanics and the house, rather than why you're doing things. And I think that's really important that we remember that as a committee.
Tom, can I just come back to you? What aspect of the report were you asking for?
When the executive director reported on the housing management system back in June, they were just about to procure the new system. And then they set out to us a timetable for its procurement and then implementation, which was from June, going to take the best part of two years. And my suggestion is that it would be right, I think, for this committee to check back in on that, given I understand there'd been a focus from this committee in the past about the whole management system, to say, how has that procurement process gone and is the implementation on track?
Right, I'm clear what we're talking about now. Yeah, it got mixed up in my mind with housing repairs and various things like that. This was the presentation we had on how things were going to be improved. The executive director, I think, was here presenting that report, wasn't he? Yeah, so yes, I do recollect that now. And it may well be worthwhile putting that into the programme. Simon's indicated again.
I mean, I think that's all I'm asking for. We've done it before. So we did it with Children's Services. We asked the director to come in and say, you know, this is, you know, we know what's been going on. We'd like an honest assessment of where we are and, you know, your assessment of what you're doing to improve this and where you're going. That's, I think, I think that's part of the job. And that's, that's how we ended up doing, as I say, that one, how we ended up looking at the Children's Service, how we ended up looking at the thing. And I remember I ended up sitting on another committee that was looking at that. But we had a very different perspective on where we were coming from. Because as I say, they were looking at, you know, the, you know, how it was going to be done. So we were essentially holding the council to account for their performance. And that's, that's, as I say, that's what is core, what the Audit Committee is for. How can we, how can we hold, how can we hold people accountable for their performance if we don't bring them in front of us and publicly ask them? As I say, and this is an issue that I think this committee ought to do that to, you know, simple as that. I don't see what's controversial about that. I don't see, you know, why it's difficult.
Have we got a suggestion about when would be appropriate timing for that then?
Joe, could I just speak just... Because these points clearly go to the interpretation of the constitution and the roles of the various committees. So scrutiny is subsumed within the policy committees under the committee system now. All that activity around performance and, you know, choice as between resources is the substantive, as well as actually prioritisation, is for the, for the, for the, for the policy committees. I think as the Chief Finance Officer has said, you need to be quite careful that this committee doesn't stray into the realms of those. And clearly, you're in the early days of your committee system. Might I suggest that there is a discussion between perhaps the Chair of this committee and the Monitoring Officer about what, you know, what could come in these, around these themes to this committee to avoid a duplication? I'm just concerned that if I don't sort of suggest that that discussion takes place, it might be that something comes here which, which doesn't sort of fit squarely within the role of this committee. You know, or perhaps, I'm looking at the terms of reference of the committee. If, for example, the things that you're talking about were the subject of audit reviews and there were action plans that were on the back of them, then that might be something that comes back through that, you know, that spectrum of audit. But otherwise, it perhaps looks a bit more like a roving scope on performance, which feels a bit more like scrutiny activity. Clearly still finding a way through how the committee system works in this context. But I would just offer a caveat about whatever is set into the work programme, that there is that opportunity for a discussion to make sure that the right thing comes here.
Okay, I take that point. But I think the fact is that as we've had the initial report here and given assurances about how things were going to do, because it's management system implementation. I will take your advice and go away, but I will say that I would expect some sort of response to how it's going to come back here as we set the thing in train. And we need to be clear, I think with other issues that have been raised in the last few minutes about, that matters that really matter to people in Sheffield, such as housing repairs, are going to be considered by a particular committee and not just slip through because nobody's quite sure they want to see. And if we are not going to examine them here, we want to ensure that they are in the work programme of some other committee. So if you can have that discussion and get back to us, yeah. Thank you. Are there any other points? If, oh, yes, there is another point, Kevin?
Not on that. It was just on the work programme. I just wondered if our Director of Finance, as part of this one, so I've got any recommendations for things under the carpet that we should also be looking at, that perhaps not is in this work agenda?
Not particularly, no. I'll be quite honest, Sheffield Council, from my perspective, is incredibly cleanly financially managed. There's, and the external auditors will also tell you, there's nothing in our practice or policies or approaches that certainly have given me any cause for concern. The policies we have on things like minimum revenue provision, capitalisation, depreciation and so on are pretty run-of-the-mill, pretty standard. There's nothing aggressive in there. We don't make investments outside the city. We never have done. The investments we do make, things like Heart of the City, are for regeneration, really carefully, business case, governed really robustly, to be quite honest. So you don't, you don't read about us in the trade press for interesting accounting treatments that some subsequently get unwound by the auditors. But you're really asking a question of me that you'd be better asking of our colleagues, Ernst and Young.
But you will be here in December as your last, as your last meeting, I think.
Actually, probably not.
Oh.
I will have finished by now.
Okay, well, in that case, I think we'll put on record your thanks for your attendance at the meetings in previous years and the work that you've done on the budget and what you will still be doing in the next month on the budget. Okay, thank you very much. And that actually, as I said, the next meeting is on the twenty-second of December. And that concludes tonight's meeting. Safe journey home through the floods.